Lead us in prayer and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor?
Praise the Lord. Would you bow your heads with me, please? Father, we just come before you and just as I see the T-shirts and I've seen the posters out there, the "Watch Us Go," "Watch Muskegon Go," as there's almost a new branding for our area. Father, I pray that there would be something new, not only just by virtue of what's put on paper or put on posters or put on shirts, but there would be something different in our city. Father, we would ask that you would make a change in our city. We would ask that even as our leaders look for new things, that, Father, there'd be a new day in our city. A new day of hope, a new day of prosperity, really a new day of overcoming some of the obstacles we faced in times past. Father, I pray that as these decisions have been made to go forward, you would grant our leaders wisdom, grant them the grace as they have new vision and they have some things that they're reaching for, that, Father God, I pray that you would even go before them, prepare their way, and, Father, we ask that you would prosper them in their way. Father, you said in your word that you would teach us to profit, you would literally teach us to walk in victory. So, Father, I pray for our leaders and I pray for our city, that, Father, you would teach us what we need to do to go forward, because in your word you said that you have good plans for us, plans for a future and an expected end. Well, Father, I know if you have that for an individual, you have that for a city. So, Father, we pray for our leaders, that you would grant them the wisdom and the vision to see what you have for us in the future. And, Father, we thank you for this. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. May we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Mayor Galeran?
Here.
Commissioner Hood?
Here.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Here.
Commissioner German?
Here.
Commissioner Masipiga?
Here.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Here. Thank you. The pastor alluded to our new campaign, Watch Muskegon, and tonight, the vice mayor is a little bit uncomfortable due to the fact that this is the first time in a...
A long time.
A long time, sixteen years, that he hasn't been here in a suit and tie, but we want to celebrate the kickoff to the Watch Muskegon campaign. And pastor did allude to the fact, too, that he hopes it's more than just billboards and banners, and it certainly will be. And we're asking all people throughout Muskegon County, Greater Muskegon, to roll up their sleeves and get engaged and get involved in really improving and recreating who we are in a positive manner. We, this people of Muskegon, Muskegon County, Greater Muskegon, we have so much to offer to each other and to the outside world. So, let's get down and dirty, start cleaning up, do the things we need to do to be the best community ever. Consent agenda, please.
Approval minutes, City Clerk's summary request to approve minutes of the May 11th Commission Work Session Meeting and the May 12th City Commission Meeting. Staff recommendation, approval of the minutes. Muskegon High School Community Officer Agreement, Public Safety, summary request. The Director of Public Safety requests that the City Commission review and approve the agreement between the City of Muskegon Police Department and the Muskegon Public Schools. The agreement is for a community officer at the high school during the 2015-2016 school year. Staff recommendation, staff recommends approving the agreement between the City of Muskegon Police Department and the Muskegon Public Schools for community officer for the school year 2015-2016. Memorandum of Understanding Justice Assistance Grant, Public Safety, summary request. The Director of Public Safety requests that the Commission authorize the Director and City Manager to enter into an agreement with the City of Muskegon Heights and Muskegon County in regards to the disperseness of the fiscal year 2015 Justice Assistance Grant. It is further requested that the mayor be authorized to sign the memorandum of understanding. Note that time is of the essence as this grant requires a thirty-day governing body review period before the grant submission and the grant deadline is June 26th. Although the Bureau of Justice Assistance has designated us as being in a disparate funding situation due to the county providing more than fifty percent of the jail facilities, our proposal is to keep the allocations exactly as they initially came from the BGA, which is as follows: County of Muskegon, zero dollars; City of Muskegon, twenty-six thousand one hundred sixty-eight dollars; and City of Muskegon Heights, seventeen thousand three hundred sixty-three dollars. Note the BGA uses crime data versus population in making these allocation decisions. The City of Muskegon's portion is planned to be used in continuation of the manner in which the previous year's JAG funding was used, which is for the prosecution of city ordinance cases dealing primarily with neighborhood issues. A prosecutor was hired specifically for this under a previous fiscal year JAG grant. Staff recommendation, staff recommends approval of this request.
Thank you. Commissioners, you've heard the consent agenda as presented. Are there any items you wish to have removed for further discussion? Commissioner?
If not, then I move to accept the consent agenda.
Second? It's been moved by Commissioner Hood, seconded by Commissioner German, to accept the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Masipiga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galeran?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. New business, please.
Amendments to the zoning ordinance to implement Form-Based Code Planning and Economic Development. Staff recommendation, staff initiated request to make the following amendments to the zoning ordinance as part of adopting Form-Based Codes for downtown. A, amend Article 20 and create a Form-Based Code overlay district. B, remove Article 22B3 Central Business District. C, amend Article 3, Section 300, and remove B3 Central Business District. D, amend Article 3 and add a new Section 305 to direct people to the Article 20, the new Form-Based Code section. E, amend the zoning map and add a new Form-Based Code district. F, amend the zoning districts table of heights and yards to remove all references to B3. Remove minimum heights in note number four. Remove reference to B3 in note number six. Add a row called Form-Based Code and an asterisk that indicates that all dimensional standards shall be per the Form-Based Code Article 20. Amend Article 23 to add Item 5 to Section 2301 to state that the scope and applicability of the Form-Based Code is contained in Section 2001.02 and 2002.00. Amend Section 2326 and remove Item 12 Downtown Parking Overlay and remove reference to overlay in Item 13 and remove Figure 23-2. I amend Section 2334 and remove reference to B3 in Item 7. Staff recommendation to approve the zoning ordinance amendments. Committee recommendation, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval at their regular meeting in May.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would move that we approve the zoning ordinance amendments as described.
Second? It's been moved by the vice mayor, seconded by Commissioner Johnson, to approve the zoning ordinance amendments as described. Good evening, Mr. Franzen.
Good evening. Sorry to make you read all that, Anne. We've been working on this for a little over a year now. It's finally wrapping up. Last couple of weeks ago, at the Planning Commission, they unanimously voted to approve it. It's really going to set the development standards for downtown, really about the physical outlay of the buildings. We've had a lot of positive responses. It should help developers with their... Should be a lot easier for developers to come in and have a project approved. We can do a lot of this at the staff level and will not cause a bunch of meetings and planning commission meetings and special use permits and plan unit developments. So, it should really streamline everything. We have Linay Wells here to give a brief presentation. She's with Williams &amp; Works, which is with one of the consultants. So, I'll hand it over to Linay now.
Thank you. Good to see you again, Ms. Wells.
Yeah, good to see you. Thank you, everyone. What a great day to be here in Muskegon and very excited about your new campaign. And it's been all over Facebook, even in the central Michigan parts of our wonderful state and even down in Bridgman area, talking to a colleague, the city manager down there today, and also very impressed with your new campaign. So, it's kind of exciting and fortuitous to be here on this day and be talking about a Form-Based Code and tools and techniques that we can do to help facilitate development and to help implement the great vision that you have put in place for your downtown. So, I'm going to sort of awkwardly turn my back to the audience and also look at this presentation. We do have a couple of slides in here that we provided to the Planning Commission. They're pretty detailed, so I might skip over some of those. We can go back to them if you have questions, but I wanted to show you a lot of what we shared with the Planning Commission at their meeting. So, essentially, we were very impressed with the robust library of planning documents and great vision that you have for your downtown, and you've been working on this for many, many years, since 2003, with the Imagine Muskegon Plan that talked about downtown as being a destination, as being mixed-use, walkable, livable. You also had the Lake Shore Redevelopment Plan that spoke to the same types of vision for your downtown with waterfront access, strong non-motorized connections, and balancing transportation with land use decisions. As part of this Form-Based Code, we also worked on a parking strategy because we always hear that there's never enough parking, but we know that there are a lot of opportunities to see some of those surface parking lots develop for infill and mixed-use development to help connect all of your downtown and make it a more walkable and inviting place. And so, we looked at some strategies for parking as well. And then, we went to the public and we had a workshop last year and said, "Well, what are your priorities for downtown and how do we make sure that this Form-Based Code can implement the goals and objectives and vision that you have for the downtown?" And what we heard was that number one priority would be to facilitate higher-density development. And number two is to foster economic development and increase tax base. And we know that any opportunity we have to transition from, say, single-use development to more mixed-use and to see an increase in that scale and intensity of development will only help bolster that tax base that you have. The Form-Based Code achieves that vision because it responds to your existing context. It facilitates infill development. It streamlines the development process. As Mike said, a lot of these projects, if they are consistent with the rules and regulations in the code, proceed straight to administrative review. They don't even go to the Planning Commission. The code offers a diversity of housing choices in terms of the types of buildings that are permitted, and it provides a framework for complete streets and how we frame the public realm as well as concern ourselves with private development, as we always do with the traditional zoning ordinance. The ordinance is development-friendly. It is 238 pages, but there are 419 images in that. So, you compare that to a traditional zoning ordinance that has very few images, probably around the same number of pages, and you can see that we... A picture is worth a thousand words, and we rely on the graphics in this document to help facilitate user interface. It also sets forth a streamlined and predictable process, as I mentioned earlier. What the Form-Based Code does is we will have a new zoning district on your zoning map. It will be called FBC or Form-Based Code. And within that Form-Based Code, we have colored areas that we call context areas, which are very similar to, say, zoning districts, but the zoning district is Form-Based Code. So, that would apply to all of the properties within that Form-Based Code boundary, which is much of the B2 district and some other areas on the edges of B2 that are part of the downtown core. The new Form-Based Code applies to all new development. We don't have it apply to any historic buildings. And then, if people are changing existing development, there are different thresholds when the Form-Based Code would apply. We realize that if you're changing, you know, making small adjustments to your building, minor changes to the facade, we don't think that the Form-Based Code should have to kick in, but when you start making more significant changes, then we do want you to comply with the standards that are in the code. But the Form-Based Code, it does not tell you the types of materials to put on your building. It doesn't tell you the color to paint your building. It doesn't tell you how to engineer your streets or where to put bike lanes. It doesn't tell you what types of plants to plant. It's purely concerned with buildings and the form of buildings and the disposition and the composition of those buildings. We also do prescribe uses, and the uses for those buildings, we took from your existing zoning ordinance, so we utilized that same framework to establish the palette of uses that would be permitted in these various context areas and within these various building So, it's much like a zoning ordinance. As I mentioned, there's an introduction, we have general provisions, we have parking, signage standards, but we also have these sections of the code that relate to the building form and context that would be different from a traditional zoning ordinance. So, we have a section called context areas and use. We have a building type section and a public realm section. And by public realm, we mean the space between the buildings on a block, right? So, from one side of the street to the other side of the street, we're concerned with the facade of those buildings and then, to some extent, what's happening in between those buildings. So, the focus of this Form-Based Code is shaping that public realm, because the public realm is the single biggest investment that we have in our cities. It's public space. It's where all the city life happens. It's where you meet and greet your neighbors. It's where all the activity takes place, and because of that, we need to make sure that it's compelling, it's dynamic, that it's a place where people want to be. So, we're very concerned with how those buildings correspond to that public realm. I am going to skip over these slides about the Form-Based Code and zoning ordinance, but if you have specific questions, I'll take them. What I want to focus on is how we are shaping the form of your city and how we're dealing with the public realm. So, we allow... We've created various building types. So, there are types of buildings that are allowed in various context areas, and each of those building types has a number of stories that would be permitted. We discuss and regulate where that building would be placed on that lot. We tell you where we want to see parking, because most often, we want to see parking behind a building, and we often want to see buildings close to the street, sometimes right at the edge of the sidewalk. And then, we also tell you the uses that would be permitted. This is a sample page from the Form-Based Code. This is a mixed-use building, and you'll see all the graphics and images and tables for easy use. We tell you the building. We let you know how many stories and how many units, and then, we tell you which type of frontage that you can plug on the front of that building. So, we have a storefront frontage, we have stoop frontages, we have terrace frontages. Those are all the different sort of design and layout of that store or that front of a building. So, some of the buildings, only certain storefronts or different frontages are permitted. In the street space, we work with Mohamad quite a bit and city staff. We have recommendations about what happens in the street space. We have recommended widths, materials, landscaping, and street furnishings. It's not a mandate. We don't want to require anything. We know that there's often a lot of site conditions that we need to be aware of, and we realize that engineering is the best place to house that information, but we do make some recommendations about those spaces. And with that, with the context areas and the building types, that is how we shape that public space, that public realm. Just to give you an example of some of the building types that we allow and looking at what you have in your city, because we've customized this code for what you have in your community. So, looking at 585 West Clay, this is a mixed-use building type. So, we allow the terrace frontage, which is unique to Muskegon, where you have that ADA or barrier-free accessible sort of lifted area that allows for access to the building when you deal with some of the topography that you have in your city. This type of building is permitted in many of the context areas. We have a Main Street context or a downtown context. You would see this building in those areas. We also have another example of a mixed-use building, the Chamber of Commerce. This is a three-story example. When we're dealing with the core of the downtown, the buildings, the number of stories are higher than we have in sort of the edge areas of the Form-Based Code district. This is an example of a flex building. This is a building type that we've never had in any of our previous Form-Based Codes, but it's unique to Muskegon. It's a lot like a mixed-use building, especially this example, because it's built to the edge of the sidewalk, but the frontage, you'll see it's a dooryard. It's not a storefront entry. It's a dooryard and then you enter through a common hallway. So, it's a different type of frontage. And then, this example is four-story, and it allows both, say, office uses but also residential in that same building. We also have a building unique to Muskegon called the Cottage Retail Building, where it's similar to, say, a retail building. Cottage meaning it has a pitched roof, so it looks more like a home. This could have been a home that transitioned to more of a commercial use, and we allow these types of buildings in the neighborhood edge and neighborhood core of that context area map that we have. And then, we also have a multiplex building, which is the name that we call an apartment condo type of building. The multiplex is primarily residential, and you'll see more of these building types in that code and hopefully throughout the community in years to come. We've also been responsive to community needs, and Muskegon being a waterfront community, we knew that we wanted to have some standards in this Form-Based Code on how we treat the waterfront. And in our mind, the waterfront is much like a street. A lot of activity can happen at the waterfront. We'd like to see that the edges of the water remain public, hopefully have public access, boardwalk pathways, so that we can capitalize on that amazing resource in this community. So, we have waterfront standards for buildings. We also have a public realm type for the waterfront, where we have an activity zone and some public space right at the edge and then, private area behind that, so we can promote activity along the waterfront. I already mentioned the flex building that's unique to Muskegon and the cottage retail and that terrace frontage because of some of the topography. And then, something that we put in the code that's new to our codes also is the garage door frontage. Many of the uses today are kind of incorporating that garage door, so you can spill out into the public realm, and so, there's this permeable edge that happens and the inside and outside become one. I mentioned earlier that we have the regulation about parking location towards the back of the buildings. And then, we're also requiring that active uses be on the ground floor in certain core areas of the downtown. Active uses promote walkability. They provide a lot of interest at the street level, and, you know, the area of Third and Western is where we want to see active uses at the ground floor, meaning retail, restaurant, brew pub, cocktail lounge, service uses. So, you'll see in the context area map that we've identified some of those areas for active uses. Number of stories, those are... We have the greatest or the highest number of stories in the downtown core, Third and Western, and we see that that being the most intense area with the tallest buildings and then progressively seeing, you know, shorter buildings as you transition to some of those existing neighborhoods that we have on the core and the historic neighborhoods in the downtown. This example below shows the step-back requirement that we have at the waterfront, so that we're not creating that cavernous experience at the waterfront. We're seeing the building step back to maintain some of the views to the water. We're integrating the Form-Based Code, as I mentioned, into the zoning ordinance. This black boundary is the boundary of the Form-Based Code district. So, your new zoning map will show this as FBC, Form-Based Code. And then, this is the map of those context areas. So, the red is the downtown context area. We have a waterfront context area. We have an edge, neighborhood edge context area. So, that's the inner workings of the specific regulations that apply to each property. And this was from the Planning Commission, but essentially, we're here looking to kind of affirm the recommendation that the Planning Commission gave to make the recommended amendments to the zoning ordinance to adopt the Form-Based Code.
So, that's all there was to it?
That's all there is to it.
Fantastic.
Context areas, building types, frontages.
Very good.
So, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. I know Commissioner Johnson, we spoke earlier about some questions you had, and if anyone else has questions, I'm happy to help answer them.
Any questions for our consultant? Commissioner?
Not a question, but I'd just like to make a comment. Several of us attended the Planning Commission meeting the night they discussed that, so they've been working on it a long time, and if you watch the Planning Commission, they are not always in agreement with one another. We have two commissioners, the mayor and vice mayor, sit on that board. The city manager sits on that board, but this one really seemed to be together, so I would certainly recommend that we adopt this.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Question.
Commissioner German?
I just wanted to know the name of your consulting company and how long have you been in existence? And what projects have you worked on? What municipalities do you have in your portfolio that you can share with us?
Sure. Thank you, Commissioner. I'd be happy to answer that question. I'm Linay Wells. I'm a principal and urban planner with Williams &amp; Works. We teamed with Naderfeld out of Grand Rapids, both firms in Grand Rapids, to work on this Form-Based Code. Williams &amp; Works has a history in Muskegon. We actually did the waterfront, Lake Shore and Waterfront Master Plan a few years back, and so, it's really exciting to be working on this Form-Based Code as a way to implement that vision for the waterfront plan. With Naderfeld, we have worked on a Form-Based Code for the City of Wyoming outside of Grand Rapids for pretty much a suburban auto-oriented corridor, where we did a community vision plan, a corridor plan, and then followed it up with a Form-Based Code to facilitate new development, and they're actually seeing new buildings being built according to that Form-Based Code. And we worked on another Form-Based Code in Grand Rapids as well. I'm also the community planner for various west Michigan townships and villages and cities. The City of Douglas, Caladonia Township. I work in Manistee sometimes, Mason County, Grand Haven, sort of up and down the waterfront.
Okay. So, you pretty much specialize in more or less downtown development? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. Yep. We certainly see a lot of interest in downtowns, seeing the changing demographics and the changing interest, and you're experiencing it here, too. People are desiring city living and a lot of new investment in our downtowns, and so, a lot of our planning work is responding to that demand.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Masipiga?
Sure. You mentioned the highest uses. I mean, and I'm being by height?
Yeah. Number of stories.
What's the highest number of stories permitted in this Form-Based Code?
Let me get my document. I'll look that up for you. It says sixteen stories.
Okay.
We could use a few more of those.
We could use one of those.
Oh, yeah.
We wouldn't want one building to take all that demand. Yeah.
No, but we'd like to work our way up to several. Vice Mayor?
I just wanted to point out a couple of things and then also just, you know, I hope people are willing to support this. I think it's going to make a difference and make it easier for people who want to do development downtown, but you might look at the map and say, "Well, there's some parts missing," and I would just point out that the waterfront piece down there is covered by a plan unit development already, and so, it's kind of moot as far as zoning that part. And so, it's kind of moved as far as zoning that part differently than what we've already done. And then, I would also point out that the residential area to the immediate south of the business district, the Heritage Village area, very specifically, the single-family residential zone, was removed from this to preserve the single-family homes as the single-family homes that they are. Those homes have been very attractive to buyers, and we want to make sure that they remain the resource that they've been. So, they would not be affected by this. They are still, and of course, the historic districts aren't affected by this either. But those single-family residential pieces are still zoned R1. So, in addition, I'd just like to say, this is something that I've been advocating for for about the time we were doing the Imagine Muskegon project, twelve, thirteen years ago now. And I think it will make a difference. Downtowns are different than other kinds of locations. And we have a blank slate. We're not just renovating old buildings. And if we want to remain downtown, if we want to remain the core of the community, then we have to create a unique space that draws people together. And I think this will help us achieve that. And so, I hope it merits your support. I'm sure we'll tweak it on and off as time goes by. But I really appreciate the work. You've been working on this for almost two years now, I believe.
Little under a year and a half, I think.
Yeah, a year and a half. So, a lot of work went into this, a lot of public input. There were a number of town hall meetings and opportunities for the general public to provide their input as well. So, I intend to support it, and I hope everyone else does as well.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Anything else, Commissioners? Commissioner Johnson?
I would just echo a bit of what the Vice Mayor was saying. Bravo to Williams &amp; Works and to Naderfeld and to city staff for all the time that you've put into this. It is a culmination of a multi-decade effort, going back to Imagine Muskegon thirteen years ago. And it does encompass and include that input collected then, subsequently, and even in the past year. So, it has really taken into account, public input, what we want to see. And I think this is an excellent move forward for our city and our downtown, streamlining the process, making it more inviting and welcoming to developers, taking into account the public realm, what we want to see in our public spaces, and making it inviting to residents, visitors, potential investors, just making it a more vibrant downtown, without being overbearing also and trying to dictate what exactly needs to go on there, giving guidance and well-thought-out guidance recommendations, while still having the flexibility down the road if we feel the need to expand this or curtail it or tweak it, we still have the flexibility. But I think this is a great move forward, and I think it is part and parcel of this Watch Muskegon, Watch Us Go. We're just getting started. I see it as part of that movement. It's, we're stepping up, and this is more than an image campaign, Watch Muskegon, Watch Us Go. It's a call to action for everybody in our community to step up, whether in their own neighborhood or their municipality step up and think differently. And I think this is part and parcel of that overall effort. And I'm excited about all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Roll call, please.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood? Absent. Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rinsesma-Sipiga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Excellent work. Thank you kindly.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, just as a point of order, since Commissioner Hood is missing, can, is it possible to have a second reading on the same night, since this is an ordinance change? I don't know if he had to leave for a family emergency or... I think let's do it, and if it's necessary to come back after we have a chance to look at the charter, do it. But I think that's a, assuming he walks back in fairly soon, sure. Take the second vote. Let me define my final answer until I get a chance to look at the charter. Thank you.
Any other business? And thank you for pointing that out. Public participation. Dr. Kavler. Mister...
No. No. The second reading would need to be at a different meeting. However, given that he's here...
Can I take a roll call?
Yeah. I'm trying to figure out how to take the roll call vote again.
And the one that made the motion?
Do a motion to reconsider...
I would move that we reconsider the previous motion to allow Commissioner Hood to participate in the vote.
Support.
So, the vote now is on the motion to reconsider, not the substantive motion.
Right.
We have a motion for the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner Johnson, to reconsider...
The previous motion.
The previous motion.
So, Commissioner Hood may participate.
In order to allow participation by Commissioner Hood.
Yes.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Rinsesma-Sipiga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Now, we need a new motion. I would move that we approve the zoning ordinance amendments as originally presented.
Second.
It's been moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner Rinsesma-Savinga, to approve the zoning ordinance amendments as presented. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rinsesma-Sipiga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Fabulous. Sorry to leave you hanging there, Doc.
Not a problem. I'm Dr. Dennis Kavler. I live at 1045 Camelot out in Laketon Township. I'm here with Lupe Alvar. We've been kind of working on the Causeway. And what we're here today is to invite you, as a city council, to a celebration of the completion of the MDOT portion of the Causeway project. That'd be June 14th, which is Flag Day, 1:00 at the north end at the new Celebration Circle. And we would like all of you to be there. We've got a lot of plans. And this is just the completion of the first third. The other $2.4 million renovation of the lagoons and the waterways will begin shortly. And Lupe, do you have anything that you wanted to add?
It's looking good.
Okay. What? Lupe?
Looking good.
Okay. But you always have something to offer.
Actually, and I would say this, if you have not yet been there at night, please, please go by there at night. It's absolutely spectacular.
It's made a world of difference lighting the park from within rather than outside along the road. And getting back to Watch Us Go, I see that park utilization in the evenings to be quite advanced, people walking the new sidewalks that complete the entire park, very well lit at night. So, I'm really looking forward to usage on that, so.
Dennis, you want to talk about the...
Yep. One of the other things we do with the new streetlights, they have bars on them. We are going to allow families with deployed veterans, since that's a veterans' park. Here's a sample. They're color-coded. This happens to be the United States Air Force. And this young lady has, was deployed. She's home now. But those will hang in the park 24 hours a day for the entire deployment. And when they come home, that will be given to the family. It's one thing to talk about deployment, but when you actually drive by and see a face, you realize that's one of our Muskegon County residents, basically in harm's way. So, we do that as a way to honor them and get the usage of the park for what it is. That's just one of the many ideas that we have. So, with that, again, we just really hope that you have some spare time on Flag Day, June 14th at 1:00. And it's not a dedication, it's a celebration of the MDOT completion. Thank you.
Thank you. You, Dr. Kavler, and Lupe, and the rest of your compatriots, thank you so much for your great efforts in helping pull this all together.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Jen Sinaki. Name rings a bell.
Hi. I've been here a few times now. My name is Jen Sinaki, and my address is 1417 Lake Shore Drive. And I'm here because we have exciting news. Our playground is ready to go. We are building it on June 6th, Saturday, June 6th. Everybody write that down. Write it down. Write it down.
Your on my calendar.
We are in need of about 20 volunteers. I have a group of about 10 coming from Home Depot. I got connections there. We're going to start about 8:00 in the morning and hopefully be done around 2:00 or 2:30, hopefully, if everything goes well with the weather and stuff. And I also, before I get more into that, I just, I'm so excited that we are completing this at the beginning of the city's new campaign. I think it fits like perfect. I think what we're trying to do in our neighborhood absolutely goes with Watch Us Go. I think, you know, the effort that we took to do this on our own, I think, is an example for other neighborhoods in our city. And hopefully, hopefully, we're going to get a lot of, you know, more interest, especially with the start of this new campaign. And I don't know, I would love to find out if we could order T-shirts for us to have, because we're going to have a ribbon cutting on June 13th. Okay. For our, for just our board members. All right, this is another date. June 13th is our ribbon cutting at 11:00 a.m. It's a Saturday. And then, we invite certainly all the Commissioners, but there is a few staff members that we'd invite also, Kathy and Mohammed and Bernadette, and actually, whoever wants to show would be great. So, I think that, I think that's about it. But yeah, we'd love if you guys could make it out. It'd be awesome. The Chronicle's going to be there.
Did you have a question, Commissioner Hood?
Yes. What park was that?
It's going to be, it's going to be the NIM's Neighborhood Playground. It's on the corner of Southern and Davis, in the front yard of the NIM School building.
And the six you were asking for volunteers?
We got, we're going to have hot dogs. We'll have donuts in the morning, hot dogs and chips and stuff for lunch. And hopefully, like I said, if we have enough people and the weather cooperates, we probably can get it done by about 2:30, if we start at about 8:00. So, I also would like to say, thank the city for the water hookup and taking care of the tree, so we can get this going. So, I guess that's all I got.
Jen, it's with a heartfelt gratitude that I thank you for your efforts in these past several years.
Well, I got to tell you, I mean, obviously, we couldn't have acquired this property without you guys. So, I mean, this has been a joint effort.
But it'll teach you to be careful when you come up with a brilliant idea...
It will. It absolutely has. That's done. I'm done opening my mouth.
And then, you get the project.
Yeah. I did learn that.
So, let that be a lesson.
Three years later, I've learned that lesson, yes.
That's wonderful. It's wonderful. And I think this is more than part and parcel of what this campaign can be or is. It really is that heart and soul of what a people can do to continually move a community forward and do good works for our friends and neighbors. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public that would like to address the commission? If not, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss attorney-client privileged communications and property acquisition. Vice Mayor?
I would move that we go into closed session to discuss attorney-client privileged communication and property acquisition.
Second.
It's been moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner Hood, to go into closed session to discuss attorney-client privileged communications and property acquisition. Discussion? Roll call.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rinsesma-Sipiga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Anybody need a five-minute break to freshen your makeup? Students who need signatures or anything?